From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the Kern County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy, and our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene. Good afternoon and welcome back to the December 9, 2025 regular session of the Board of Supervisors 2:00 p.m. meeting. We'll begin as we always do with the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Parlier?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Press?
Here. Thank you. I would like to report that today in closed session regarding item number 34 of this morning's agenda, pleased to report by unanimous vote of 5-0, the Board of Supervisors reappointed Glenn Fankhauser to the position of Agricultural Commissioner slash County Sealer of Weights and Measures for a four-year term, effective retroactive to April 4, 2025 through April 3, 2029 pursuant to Food and Agricultural Code Sections 21, 21, and 21, 22. Is Glenn present to say a few words? No. Okay. Well, congratulations and thank you for all your hard work. Regarding our consent agenda... Oh, excuse me. I knew this was going to be rough. Okay. Can we please hear from Kendra, our county council, regarding items in closed session?
Yes. Good afternoon. The board met in closed session this morning following the AM agenda. Chairwoman Perez reported out on item number 34 just now, and regarding items 33, 35, and 36, there were no reportable actions taken. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to consider the consent agenda at this time, and I'm going to read the consent agenda items, but I have a change as to item number 11, and I'll tell you when we get to it. So consent matters are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. We usually handle them with one vote unless, of course, a member of the public has questions, concerns, input. We, of course, want to hear from you and want to hear your input. So at the reading of the consent agenda, you can let me know if you have an issue. Consent matters begin on page two and include item number five. On page three, item number six. On page four, both items, seven and eight. On page five, items nine through 13. With regard to item number 11, we'll pool item 11A, C, L, and S with a new fiscal impact number of $142,235.44. I'll read that again. Regarding item 11ACLs, a new fiscal impact number of $142,235.44. Items otherwise nine through 13 remain on consent. On page six, all items listed 14 through 19. On page seven, items 20 through 22. Also, item 24 through 26, but as to item 24, I would ask Kendra, please, for revisions to read into the record.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. Item number... On page eight of the... I'm looking at the redline version of the ordinance code. On page eight of that redline version, item G should be revised so that instead of saying "materials" to contain items listed in one through six or three below, it should say "items listed in A through G above."
Okay.
Also, on item H, it says "the entire olé of belongings," and that should say "the entire pile of belongings." And with those revisions...
Important distinction. Okay.
Yes, with those revisions, it is good to go.
Thank you. So again, on page seven, items 20 through 22, 24 through 26. Kendra, your revisions again? Just kidding. Okay. On page number eight, all items listed 27 through 33. On page nine, all items listed 34 through 39. And on page 10, all items listed 40 through 46. Are there any members of the public that would like to discuss any matters on consent? Okay, seeing no interest in doing so, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Kern Sanitation Authority.
Motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Thank you. We are now sitting as the Kern Sanitation Authority and will consider the consent agenda, which includes items C1 and C2. Does any member of the public wish to comment on C1 or C2? Seeing no interest from the public, I will close the public portion and ask my board members if they wish to comment or pull any items. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and to adjourn as the Kern Sanitation Authority and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Gentlemen, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Thank you. We have now reconvened as the Board of Supervisors and will continue our agenda with item number three, public presentations. Wow, bravo. The end of the year, I almost got it right. Incredible. Nobody gets it all. Okay. Public presentations are matters that are within the Board of Supervisors' agenda... Excuse me, jurisdiction, so they're within our power to do something about. They're within the Kern County Board of Supervisors jurisdiction, but not on today's specific agenda. We'd ask the public to make comments on these matters. We ask that you please state and spell your name for the record, and please try to honor our two-minute time limit. I know it's not a perfect system. It's frustrating for everybody, I assure you, but it is a standard operating procedure for our board, and we ask that you please graciously consider the two-minute time limit. Thank you so much, and please come forward, state and spell your name for the record for matters that are not on today's agenda but are within our jurisdiction. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, board members. I'm back. Nadine Escalante, N-A-D-I-N-E-E-S-C-A-L-A-N-T-E. Earlier this morning, I was speaking about a situation with CPS and foster homes. The areas where I was reading through the two manuals that are provided to the foster parents, areas where I see we could have improvement is on training for appropriate forms of discipline, how to work with children who experience trauma, and suggestions for reading material to aid foster parents in growing knowledge based on various forms of trauma and trauma-induced reactive behavior. More training on how to handle minors who have experienced mental health issues such as depression, anxiety, suicidal thoughts, and self-mutilation, and what to do in the cases if you see a child self-harming. If the policy is you're not to put your hands on them, do you just allow it to happen and call law enforcement, or do you stop it? It puts foster parents in a bind. As a parent, your initial response is to take it from them and don't do this. You're hurting yourself. So we're putting them in a bind. De-escalation training, situations examples, foster parents in a setting and boundaries and rules. When minors are violating or refusing to acknowledge boundaries in the home, what is that foster parent supposed to do, like in this case with my neighbor? Need more adequate training on how to handle com... Well, there's none. There's no training on how to handle combative, aggressive, or assaultive behavior from 12 years and up. That has to be an important issue. Jeff and Supervisor Press, Supervisor Flores, you guys have known me for years. You know my history working for probation where I was assaulted. This is something that's very important to me, people's safety, especially when we care about the community, our youth. We have to keep those community members safe. So those are the things that I've oversaw, and I'm open to any discussions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Nadine. Appreciate all of your advocacy work and service to this community. Thank you. With any other members of the public who would like to address this board? Okay, I'm going to close the public presentations portion of our Board of Supervisors hearing and move to board member announcements or reports. Gentlemen, anything? Supervisor Flores?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, it's come to my attention there's an increasing public health threat to our youth and to our citizens in general, and this is something that has come to the attention of my office and also to the Office of Supervisor Philip Peters. There is a drug that's out there, kind of a homeopathic, unregulated drug. It's touted as a natural substance called kratom, and kratom is basically the scientific drug is seven hydroxy mitra-gynine, and this poses significant health risks to our community. I've been contacted by hospitals, by our ERs, by physicians who are seeing this increase in use. It's highly, highly addictive. It's known as baby meth and baby fentanyl all-in-one. It's both an opiate and a stimulant in one form, so it's kind of a unique substance. So other counties have adopted ordinances, specifically Orange County and Fresno, which comes to mind. And so I'd like to direct our public health department and county council to take a look at this and come back with a prospective ordinance within 30 or 60 days, whatever you see fit, where we can ban the sale to minors and come up with a graduated citation structure for those that are selling it after we adopt, if the board chooses to adopt this, and that would be my referral. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Flores. We have a referral. Do we need a motion on that? So that's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes, gentlemen. Excuse me. Are there members of the public that would like to comment? Okay. Cast your votes, please.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, any other board member announcements or reports? Okay. Moving on, we have one remaining item this afternoon. We have, having most matters being on consent, and that is under the CAO's office, item number 23, which is a report on the Americans with Disabilities Act self-assessment and request for approval of proposed 2025 transition plan. I understand Mr. Eric Nesbit of the CAO's office will be handling this matter, and the floor is yours, sir.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. We will be... For this item, we'll be providing a recap of the assessment process, Americans with Disabilities Act assessment process, and then asking your board to approve the draft proposed transition plan. I'll be providing a brief overview, and then I'll be turning it over to Mr. Philip Smith, sitting next to me from our ADA consultant Bureau Veritas. Quickly before we begin, I would like to first thank Bureau Veritas, the entire team over there, for all of their work over the past more than a year on this project, as well as our department heads and their staff who assisted with coordinating access to all of their many facilities, and also our General Services Division and Public Works Department for their additional assistance on this project.
Thank you.
So the Americans with Disabilities Act Title II is specific to local government, and there are a number of requirements for local government to ensure that individuals with disabilities have equal opportunity and access to benefit from any programs, services, facilities that local governments operate. That will include physical access to facilities and buildings, effective communication with individuals with disabilities, including hearing loss, vision difficulties, or speech disabilities, and also to make changes to policies and practices when the current practice is potentially excluding individuals with disabilities. The assessment and transition plan process is required as part of the Americans with Disabilities Act, and it's really intended to make sure that the local agency captures all of the potential issues that may be creating difficulties for individuals with disabilities, and then also creating a plan to address those issues and identifying which items are really the most pressing, that are the biggest issue and need to be addressed first, and setting up a framework to begin that work. Also, as part of this process, there is a requirement for public input, which back on November 4, your assistant CAO, Elsa Martinez, gave a presentation to your board. As part of that, we were in the middle of an online survey at that point, so that's been addressed as part of this process, but also absolutely the public is welcome to provide input today as well. With the transition plan, this is really a framework for beginning the work. It is intended to be a It is intended to be a living document. There will be changes required, adjustments that need to be made as we work on this. The costs are significant, but they'll be spread out over up to 20 fiscal years. For just our buildings, parks, facilities, the estimated cost for barrier removal is $138 million, which is a big number. For our public rights of way, which includes our roads and sidewalks, it's an even bigger number, $462 million. Those projects will be addressed over time, again, with the most urgent addressed first, and this will be incorporated into the annual budget process. Obviously, with the county, we have, you know, limited ability to fund projects. That's historically been an issue, but we will be working to incorporate these ADA repairs as part of the annual budget process and capital projects. We will also be bringing back some proposed policy changes to your board in early next calendar year to address some other issues to ensure access for individuals with disabilities, including training for county employees. And now I will turn it over to Mr. Smith to continue the presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Philip Smith. I'm a Certified Access Specialist and ADA Coordinator with Bureau Veritas. I'm here today to present a broad overview of the results of the Title II Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. I'd like to take a moment to add a special thank you to Eric and his team for his many contributions to the project, not least of which included coordinating nearly 300 individual The self-evaluation and transition plan process begins with the designation of at least one accessibility coordinator, implementation of a grievance procedure, and engaging the community and users of the facilities to determine their specific needs. The wheel on the right emphasizes that the transition plan is really an ongoing process. It's important to remember that the transition plan is a living document and will require regular updates as facilities, community needs, and priorities will all likely change over time. The process of developing the transition plan and self-evaluation began in September of 2024 with the initial kickoff meeting. In October of that year, we began assessing the county-owned parks and buildings. November of 2024, we began reviewing the policies, programs, and website, and in December of 2024, we began assessing the pedestrian facilities in the public right-of-way. Assessment of the county policies was completed in October of 2025, and facility assessments were completed in August of 2025. The evaluation of buildings and parks, public rights of way, and policies and programs were happening concurrently by separate Bureau Veritas assessors and teams. In October of 2025, an online public outreach engagement survey was completed, and in November, the draft ADA transition plan was posted for public review. The online community outreach survey received a total of 129 responses. While most of the respondents were from the Bakersfield area, many of the other metro areas within the county received at least a few responses. This valuable information provided by the community helped to inform the overall of the transition plan, with initial priority given to those locations used most often. The full survey results are included in Appendix B of the transition plan. The self-evaluation includes a full accessibility assessment of the built environment, such as buildings, parks, and facilities within the public right-of-way, as well as the county's programs, policies, and procedures. Results are broken into three sections: county programs, policies, and procedures; county-owned buildings and parks; and pedestrian facilities in the public right-of-way. The evaluation of Kern County's programs, policies, and procedures resulted in a series of findings and recommendations. Details are included in Section 6 of the report and include community services, human resources, ADA coordinator, and grievance procedure requirements, effective communication with those with disabilities, emergency management procedures, et cetera. It also includes an in-depth assessment of the county's website. In general, having regular training and written policies in place can ensure that accessible programs and practices continue to be accessible if current staff members or directors leave. Where physical barriers to access impact programs and services, steps must be taken to ensure these programs and services are accessible to people with disabilities. This is often referred to as program access and is unique to Title II of the ADA. This was originally intended to address older buildings that predate accessibility standards. In practice, we find that there can be noncompliant elements even in newer construction. Examples can include simple things like having furniture placed within the required maneuvering clearance of a door, or maintenance-related issues such as cracked or damaged walkways. For this evaluation, the assessment included all of Kern County's buildings and parks, regardless of age. The transition plan is broken into five phases over 20 fiscal years. I apologize, that says four over 19, with priority being given to amenities most used and by those designated from the outreach survey. As a phase one would include parks, libraries, and administration facilities, as phase four would be correctional facilities, and phase five would be the employee-only areas. Pedestrian facilities within the public right-of-way are deemed to be a service or program of the government. The case of Barden v. City of Sacramento was a landmark lawsuit under Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act that established public sidewalks as a program or activity of a public entity. As such, Kern County's inventory of sidewalks, curb ramps, transit stops, and pedestrian signals were evaluated for compliance. Remediation has been separated into three phases over 20 fiscal years based on the severity of the barrier and the proximity to government buildings, parks, schools, and other areas identified in the public outreach survey. Due to the large amount of data, the findings of the right-of-way evaluation have been integrated into the county's GIS system as a series of layers. Detailed continuous measurements are available and are now actionable within an existing software platform. The graphics above are just one of the ways that the county can now view and manage this information. These are close-ups of just the metro Bakersfield area, but you can zoom into any of those areas and get foot-by-foot results of the assessment. At this time, the transition planning process is not ending but rather just beginning. From here, the county and its ADA coordinators will oversee implementation and regular updating of the transition plan. Thank you for your time. We gladly welcome any questions the board may have.
Okay, wow, that's extensive. Thank you. Eric?
The recommendation is for your board to approve the proposed transition plan, and if there are any other questions or comments, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Are there members of the public who would like to weigh in on the presentation as just provided? Okay. Seeing no interest in the public, I'll close the public portion, return to the board. Gentlemen, do you have questions, comments, input?
I'll move the staff's recommendation.
We have a motion by Supervisor Couch and a second by Supervisor Parlier. Gentlemen, please cast your votes.
... All eyes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much for your presentation and your hard work. It's critical that we think about such matters when we're not necessarily obviously disabled. I don't think that we naturally think about such things. We have our own challenges that we're consumed with, as human nature is, but it's important to think outside of ourselves and some of the such basic challenges that so many people face, and just talking to their government, petitioning their government. So I really appreciate what you've done, the hard work that you've put behind it. You know, it's a lot of details and technicalities, but this is really human beings that are our neighbors, that have many, many, many challenges. Accessing their government should not be overly burdensome. So thank you. I appreciate your presentation and the well-balanced approach. Moving on, it brings us to the end of our agenda. Any other remaining matters, Madam Clerk, council, CAO? Seeing none? Okay, we're going to adjourn in a moment, and we'll return for our final meeting of the year, my final chairmanship meeting, which will be, you know, really, really exciting, and of course, on to our wonderful Christmas season. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to December 16, 2025 for our remaining meeting of the year.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Supervisor Flores. So moved.